Thank you all for being here. We will call this meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please by your head. Lord, we come humbly before you asking for your mercy and grace, your continued mercy and grace. Lord, we thank you for this family of people who work on a daily basis to make lives better within our community. We ask for continued blessings amongst all faculty, staff, and people who work in conjunction with this college. From the head right down to the bottom, from the highest to the least, we ask for continued blessings upon this college and this community. We ask blessings for our leaders, those folks who lead us on a daily basis, whether they're in government or in business. And then, God, I pray that we have traveling grace to and from this place, in Jesus' name in whom I pray, and in whom's name you may pray. Amen.
I'd like to move my hands to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to start this morning with some recognitions, the first being a retirement resolution for Mr. William Klein. Mr. Klein, if you could come up, please?
Hi, will you retire?
I am.
Said resolution. Whereas Major General William Klein, a graduate of the United States Military Academy at West Point, served his country in the US Army Office for many years before joining the faculty at St. Petersburg College in 1998. And whereas Major General Klein found that he had a real love for teaching and strived to provide an academic environment filled with quality and integrity in his political science classrooms on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus. And whereas Major General Klein championed student success, he rarely missed a class or any college function that needed his attention or attendance. And whereas Major General Klein served his community as a member of the City of St. Petersburg Vision, Planning, and Development and Review Commission, he also served the college as a member of the Faculty Senate for six years and chaired the Faculty Governance Organization on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus for three years. A fully funded foundation scholarship to benefit future students bears his name. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college and the community by Major General William Klein and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this fifteenth day of May 2018. Major General William Klein.
Never give a faculty member the mic. When Call Culler hired me, I said, "I'll stay for at least three years," and it's been 20 years. And the college has meant so much to me, I can't even tell you how much. The kids keep you young, and this college does so much for this community that it's almost unbelievable. I think Mayor Foster over there will echo that. But there are great things ahead. Keep going. You're gonna reach the pinnacle. You're already almost there, so keep going, and thank you for all the support I've had for these 20 years.
Thank you so much, Mr. Klein, for your service and work over the last 20 years for this college, and a thank you to the others on our list here who could not make it today. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I, before you leave?
Sure.
General Klein? I just want to say thank you for all your service, not just at the college. I had the opportunity to work with General Klein prior to coming to the college, and let me just tell you, it is very rare that you see someone who loses an election and dies back into this community the way he did. Thank you for all you did in our community, as well as at the college. You have been somewhat of a hero to me, because after losing, most people get sour grapes. You just got back to work, and we appreciate you, and I appreciate you and all you've done. Thank you.
And if I could, General, don't run off, General. We have more nice things to say about you. When I was on city council and certainly as mayor, you were one of the city's go-to guys, and if we had a challenge, you were often consulted. Thank you for your service, not only to this country, in the military, and leaving your mark for, and defending our freedoms, but also leaving your mark on the city of St. Petersburg and St. Petersburg College. Your breadth of knowledge and all of that is, your influences are scattered throughout the city, and we're grateful. He tells me he's not really retiring. He's retiring from this season, but you have many seasons ahead, and we wish you well. Thank you.
We're going to go off-script just for a minute here. Dr. Williams has a special resolution to read about a very special man who we lost a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Joe Lang.
While we just celebrated the good work of Major General Klein, we also want to take a moment and remember our beloved Joe Lang. And so I'm gonna read the resolution that was provided to his family at his service. Whereas Joseph H. Lang has been a pivotal part of St. Petersburg College since he was a student leader on the St. Petersburg Gibbs campus in the 1950s. And whereas Mr. Lang, a distinguished attorney who proudly served his community and the state of Florida for several decades, never relinquished his ties with his first alma mater, St. Petersburg College, where his advice and counsel were sought after, trusted, and deeply cherished by four college presidents, numerous trustees, and college staff. And whereas Mr. Lang, a gracious and caring man, was never too busy or too tired to return a call or answer a question while serving as the college's attorney to the Board of Trustees from 2001 until the time of his passing. And whereas Mr. Lang brought honor and distinction to the college by serving as a chairman of the Florida Board of Community Colleges and later as president of the Florida College System Foundation. And whereas Mr. Lang, a member of the St. Petersburg College Alumni Association, was named the Most Outstanding Alumnus in 1990 and automatically became a member of the college's Hall of Distinction for his unselfish service to the college, his community, and the state of Florida. And whereas Mr. Lang has always made student success a focus of his life, as he and his beloved wife, Elsie, have contributed over the years to many scholarships through the St. Pete College Foundation to ensure that students in need complete what they start and reach their educational goals. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize the outstanding contributions of Joseph H. Lang to the college, the community, and the state of Florida, and extend to his family our deepest sympathy on his passing. Let's just give a round of applause for Mr. Lang. The college has a Standing Facilities Naming Committee, and that committee met yesterday. And that committee made some recommendations as to what we should name or whose name we should offer for the St. Petersburg Gibbs Building, the Student Success Center. Today, I am pleased to recommend to the Board of Trustees for approval Joseph H. Lang as the name of that building for the Student Success Center. So I would need the board's approval for that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve that the Student Center on the Gibbs campus be named after Joe Lang.
We have a first and we have a second on the floor, and everyone should have in front of them the official memorandum reviewing the recommendation from the committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject? Just yesterday, when the naming committee met, there were other names brought forth as well, but what was very interesting to me as an observer is the faculty representative to the committee, the community representative to the committee, a institutional representative to the committee, an administrative representative to the committee, all brought forth Mr. Lang's name as somebody who deserved this honor, and each for their own reason, and each with very good reasons, and it really was an easy meeting to facilitate with such unanimity.
That's fantastic. I can think of no better name for the new Student Success Center at the St. Pete Gibbs Campus, and I'm extremely happy that we voted on that today.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
If I could, Mr. Chair, his passing was a shock to all of us, because just the meeting before, we expected him to walk in the door, and he was here two meetings ago. But he loved this college, and he didn't have to go to graduation, but he did, he went to all of them. And just this past, in the winter, graduation at Indian Rocks, I was representing the Board of Trustees, and you know, there were a thousand hands to shake, or it was a multitude of people, and he said, "Oh, I wanna be up there. When you get tired, you know, tap me in." And he jumped on that chance to shake the hands of the kids, of the young people and old alike that attend our college that are getting degrees, that he couldn't wait to congratulate them. And so, yeah, I'm proud to know him. His office was across the street from mine, and during the presidential search, we had many, many meetings, and his advice and counsel to me as chair at that time during that process and throughout is gonna be, it was very influential, and it's gonna be missed. And as a member of the St. Pete Bar community, he, just great service, so thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Lang will truly be missed. He's one of the, he, I'd never forget, I got appointed, and I didn't know what I was gonna be doing, and he and Cecil Keen pulled me aside and would always give me good advice and good guidance. He became a family member, not just a friend. I've never known him to meet a stranger. I think the mayor can tell you that. Anybody Joe met, he embraced him and tried to, and especially if it was a young man, he always gave us good advice on everything. It was never, and his demeanor was always so calm. I wish I could do that, like he does, or did.
We do, too.
Keep praying for me. Maybe I'll get there. But he was always very calm, and he always gave great guidance. Ms. Elsie, same thing. She was always lockstep with him. I remember visiting him in his office, you know, she was there with that inviting smile at the front door. Now, how he did that, I don't know. Worked with his wife every day. I'm home just some days, and I don't know how I, I don't know if I could do that every day, but he did it. But he also did everything with, with, with just a style of, and a sense of humanity and a sense of pride, and he made you feel good about everything that you did, as well as what he did. And I know of no person that has served this college in a greater way, and this community in a greater way than Joe Lang. He gave so much, from his boys, you know, just going to the service. And I went to college with his oldest son, along with Dr. Williams' sister, and we both knew Joe very well. But they have the same demeanor. It's almost like, you know, they're the same people, just a little younger, but you can tell he's instilled so much in so many. And nobody is more deserving of the naming of this facility than Joe, but not because of how he'd served the college, but just type of man, individual that he was to the entire community. He gave so much to the legal community and gave so much away. Anybody that needed legal advice, he, I've seen him personally, telling them, "Don't worry about paying me. Just come on in, and let's talk about it, and let's see how we can help." And that's just the type of individual he was. He truly does not have to have people talk about him, his life. He lived the type of life that we all would hope to have live one day. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and I just want to say publicly, thank you to Ms. Lang and her family for sharing such a great man with the college and this community. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. Mr. Lang was the very first person to approach me, I think, when I walked in the room at my first board meeting a couple of years ago, and he continued to step up and make sure that if he could help in any way, that I knew that his help was there. He was always willing to give advice and to offer encouragement, and that will be missed. This is an intimidating room to step into for the first time, and it was nice to have him there. He, Mr. Foster touched on it, and so did Mr. Gibbons. He truly loved to serve, and he loved this college. Anyone who knew him for any more than a minute knew that this was not some sort of ego move for him to be involved at the college. This was out of service and out of love. And I hope that when I am Mr. Lang's age, I am just as engaged and just as involved and working just as much to improve our community, and not, well, I hope to take some time off, but he will be missed. Thank you all for your comments. At this time, we'll, we have another announcement from the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay. I'd like to invite that group up.
Good morning, Chair Stonecypher, Board of Trustees, and President Williams. My name is Theresa McFarlane. I'm the Program and Data Manager for St. Petersburg College Foundation, standing in for Frances New, our VP of Institutional Advancement and Executive Director of the Foundation. St. Petersburg College Grants Department, in collaboration with the Foundation, submitted a proposal in January to the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay for the Health and Human Services Grant. The Community Foundation of Tampa Bay established this grant with the knowledge that a healthy community is strengthened by a shared belief in helping neighbors in need. Health and Human Services Grants were awarded to organizations the Community Foundation felt promoted wellness and benefited those suffering from poverty, discrimination, and violence. I'm proud to say that St. Petersburg College was awarded $15,000 in a grant to support our mental health awareness program. With the development of this program, SPC faculty and staff will be able to undergo high-level training that will help them identify and support students with mental health issues. This training will cover the following subject areas. It is depression and mood disorders, anxiety disorders, trauma, psychosis, substance abuse disorders, and suicidal ideations. I'm honored to accept this check on behalf of our Board of Trustees, our Board of Directors, the Foundation, Grants Department, faculty, staff, the community we serve, and most important, our students. We thank Ms. Marlene Spalding, the President and CEO, and Ms. Wilma Norton, VP of Marketing and Communications, for the Community Foundation of Tampa's funding of our program, and invite you to say a few words immediately following a photo op with Chairman Stonecypher and President Williams.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you. I'm so pleased to be here, along with Wilma Norton, who's a familiar face here at St. Pete College, and a huge advocate of your work. This is just the beginning of what I see as addressing a very important and growing problem on our college campuses, and it so well aligns with our LEAP network, of which we're so proud. St. Pete College led the way in bringing Pinellas to be a part of that LEAP network, LEAP Tampa Bay for college attainment, that we felt it was truly aligned with that. We'll be watching anxiously to see how your interventions work, to see if that can be scaled to other college campuses. So thank you for being open to this problem, for being willing to address it, and for being a great partner to us in so many ways. Thank you.
Thank you very much. don't know much about that group, I encourage you to do some research on your own time. They facilitate wonderful things for our area, and we're proud to be partners in this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd also, and I'd like to echo that, but I'd also like to tell Dr. Williams, "A job well done." I'm sure Jackie Skry and Katie Schultz had something to do with that, or no?
Oh.
In writing the grant?
Yes.
So I'd like to congratulate them as well.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
So thank you for doing that.
We will move on to comments from the board. I will start and then hand it over to our other board members. I just wanted to quickly touch on graduation on Saturday, another great event, and it was, what do we have, 1,300 students walk?
Something like that.
1,300 students, a very efficient ceremony, I have to say, which was impressive. It was a fun morning, as it always is, and congratulations to Dr. Williams for her first spring commencement ceremony. And then, I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to attend the finals of a business pitch and business plan competition at the Seminole Campus, and thank you for Provost Strickland for having me there. That was, that was an amazing night to see what some of our students developed, came up with, not only creativity, their creative ideas, but also putting pen to paper, working out the details of how an actual business would run, what the problems could be, who their target market would be, and then get drilled and peppered with questions from a panel of judges. It was encouraging to see what they came up with, how they handled it, and then to see, of course, awards given out at the end of the night. I believe that was the eighth or ninth year that we've done that here, and I look forward to seeing it again. And if you all haven't witnessed that, I'd encourage you next year to be involved and come check that out. It was, it was great. Any other comments from our board? With nothing, we will move to our president.
I will always have comments. First, I want to thank Audra Liswitt and Dr. Pat Renard for graduation, and all who was part of the planning. It was way more than I expected. It was awesome. And I just want to give credit where credit is due. You guys did the work, and it turned out great. Provost, you called the names, you had the cadence right. It was great. Everything went very well, facilities, that team did an excellent job, and all the marshals, so I want to thank you guys for that. I had the opportunity of spending time at Seminole Campus, at the educational ecosystem for Seminole, and it was an awesome event where we had Pinellas County Schools folks there and us to talk about how we can move through this process in helping students move from middle to high school to college, et cetera. Dr. Jesse Coraggio, Provost Strickland, you guys did a great job with that event. Hopefully, we will have it again. Good job there. I've been involved with the USF integration process. I'm on a task force there. We are having a press conference, I believe, on the 23rd with President Ginshaft, myself, and Representative Sprouts and some others, so I'd like for us to be there at that press conference. I'll, we'll be sending out an email, sharing with the college family on that. Speaking of the integration, it matches our FUSE program. Did you guys know that this year, we graduated 23 students who are FUSE students, who are already targeted to go to USF, and this summer, we'll be graduating another 22? So we are moving forward on the two plus two. On May 8th, Pinellas County Schools approved our North County Collegiate High School at Clearwater Campus. Glad about that. So I want to thank everyone who was there, who made it happen. It was very, very good. We had some stickler points, but we got through it, and I just want to thank you all for that. Starla, Catherine, thank you so much. Ann Cooper, thank you for your work there. Clearwater Library, we had the opening. I think Katie, you were there, were you there?
I was.
Katie was there, and it was very good. Mayor Kretikas contacted me to give us kudos on how well we did with that. I learned last week that SPC was ranked sixth in the nation for study abroad, for the number of students we're sending abroad and giving them that experience, so I want to thank the team for that national ranking. That's a big deal. Trustee Gibbons joined me at AACC. We made a lot of friends and connections there, and SPC, I think we presented like six times at that convention. Had a meeting with the mayor's council about St. Petersburg College and where we fit in the agenda for each city, which was very interesting. And finally, we had a great collaborative lab with the downtown partners to look at the downtown campus and where we're going next, and they've given us some great feedback. Andrea did a great job. Ann Cooper and team, all who were involved, was great. And so that's my report for last month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lot of items.
Lot of items.
Exciting items.
Great items.
We will move to public comments. I do not have any cards up here with me. Looks like we do not have any today. So that takes us to our approval of the Board of Trustees minutes from the April 17th, 2018, meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a first, do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. We'll move to our monthly reports. Anything to report this month? Ms. Gardner?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Dr. Williams and the trustees concerning Mr. Lang, our board attorney, trustee emeritus, I believe, chair of the trustee emeritus, longtime supporter of the college, personal mentor to me, and a very good friend. He'll be sorely missed, and I feel very lonely up here. But I just wanted to have you know that the Office of General Counsel stands ready to assist with any kind of service or matter that may come your way, if you would take me up on that. Also, as you are aware, Mr. Mark Barnaby has been retained to provide legal counsel to the board, specifically in the matter of the petition of Marvin Bright to the Division of Administrative Hearing. Mr. Barnaby is a principal at the firm of Blattlick Walters and board certified in city, county, and local government law, and he will be addressing the board later on the agenda, Section 6C, Administrative Matters.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gardner.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to invite up Dr. Weideman for a faculty governance organization update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
My name is Carol Weideman. I'm the Faculty FGO Chairperson for the St. Pete Gibbs Campus, and I'm here to provide an update for the FGO. Our Senate President, Dr. Shannon Olra, could not be with us this morning. This is the first week of classes, and she has a microbiology lab that starts at 9:30, and the first day, we go over the syllabus and safety protocols, so she thought it was better she stay in the lab. So, she thought it was better she stay in the lab. So, let's get on to our updates. Dean Leopold, Heather Roberson, and Shannon have been working on the learning experience. There have been two committee meetings to discuss the value proposition and initial stages of student engagement. At the second meeting, recommendations were made to seek input from faculty across the campuses. Six input sessions were hosted from March 27th through April 26th at the various campuses. At these sessions, faculty were presented with a quick summary of the data collected from the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, also known as the CSE, regarding student engagement, and then presented with the following four questions. What are reasonable expectations of our students? What are reasonable, what's, excuse me, what expectations can students have of you? How do you engage your students, and what do you need? There were over 75 attendees at the various sessions despite the timing. It was late in the semester, sometimes hard to get faculty to meetings. Shannon asked me to extend thanks to all those who did attend. The responses gathered at the sessions, along with student feedback regarding academic excellence on the Strategic Impact Plan Survey, were compiled, and recommendations are being finalized based on that data. There were some overarching themes, and they included, "The first step to cultivating a learning environment with mutual ownership is providing clear expectations, and the best way to do this is to provide a robust and thoughtful course syllabus. To provoke purposeful reflection of learning, a student must know where they stand within the course throughout the semester. Course grade books will be continuously updated to apprise students of their standing within the course. Work together to develop faculty communication plans for quote, 'unengaged students.' Periodic course review to include a review of the strategies for course instruction to support focus areas. Review and align the Student Survey of Instruction, the SSI, and the Faculty 180 measures to reflect the CSE measures. And development of learning ecosystems, which are also known as professional learning communities, that would provide faculty-to-faculty engagement, as well as faculty tutor and advisor engagement. Additional information regarding specific measures will be shared with, as part of the retention plan by Dr. Cooper at next month's board meeting." And speaking of campus visits, the faculty want to say thank you to Dr. Williams for coming out to all of our campuses and having lunches with us, and it was very, very enjoyable. And we know your time is limited, and we really appreciate that effort. An academic, updated academic integrity policy that more closely aligns with the academic appeals process has been drafted by a team of faculty that include Kristy Powers, Christian Moriarty, Bonnie Jeffers, Melanie Payden, and Shannon. The team built on work previously done by Dr. Powers and incorporated feedback from faculty. FGO Commons discussion posts, deans, and the modified procedure has been shared with the FGO Senate, chairs and program directors, and the dean's council. To review a flow chart of the proposed process, you can visit our FGO SharePoint website, look under FGO Senate, and you'll find it under the April meeting content. And I also wanted to share, Shannon asked me to share a final highlight on the SPC Titan Trot that was held on April 14th on the Clearwater Campus. Students, faculty, staff, administrators, and even one of our board members came out bright and early to the Clearwater Campus to volunteer or participate in the Titan Trot. The organizing committee thanks all who were involved in one way or another. The event raised enough funds to sponsor four $500 scholarships. The committee voted on the criteria for the scholarships and decided the recipients should be working to complete their program or their degree and be no more than one year from completion, which I know is one of Dr. Williams' targets for our scholarships. It was proposed that the scholarship would be called the Titan Trot Finish Line Scholarship, with the finish line right out there. And I thank you for your time. Turn it back to you. Any comments or questions?
Any comments from the board?
Good job.
Thank you so much for the update.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Trimble, if you would please come forward, and we'll get a Career Service Employee Council update. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Williams. My name is Jeanne Trimble, and I'm the Chair of the Career Service Employee Council. During my last presentation to the board, I shared our desire for a revitalized council. Today, I would like to share some of our progress. CSEC Council members have worked on updating our mission statement to reflect and support CSEC's commitment to SPC's three pillars: academic excellence, economic mobility, and community engagement. The final outcome should be approved by our council and be on our SharePoint site soon. We created new goals for the coming year. Among our goals are engaging and enriching the lives of career service employees. To do so, we must first seek out their needs and wants through person-to-person contact and listening posts, then finding solutions. Secondly, promoting effective communication, trust, and collaboration between all employees of the college. Finally, increasing CSEC visibility at SPC, using multiple means of communication with career service employees. This includes our SharePoint site, the blue and white emails, flyers, and, most importantly, Further re-energizing has centered on the council structure itself. For example, creating a new community engagement subcommittee. This group has organized a clothing drive for the homeless, service projects for MLK Day, and, most recently, participated in the America II Corporate Sports Fest a few weeks ago. Secondly, the council has revived a dormant subcommittee, the Bylaws and Onboarding Review. We are updating the bylaws to reflect the new leadership role of CSEC with fresh goals and objectives. Furthermore, we are establishing an onboarding process whereby current and outgoing members will mentor newly elected candidates, ensuring a smooth transition. In conclusion, the council will continue our pledge to revitalize CSEC and help career service employees through training, active listening, and communication. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Yeah, I want to thank you, Ms. Trimble, for being able to take a step back and relook at all this, especially with the three pillars that we came up with and things changing. So, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Good job.
With that, I will call up Dr. Coraggio with a Spring 2008 Course Success Rate update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
Today, we sit on the second day of classes, the second day of summer. We just had our graduation this past weekend, and we thought we'd bring to the board an update on where we are in success rates for our spring term. So, many of you have seen this presentation before, but just as a real quick refresher, a success rate is one of the outcomes that we focus on, and it essentially is measured by the number of A, B, and C grades all over other grades. So, that's essentially how we come up with the course success rate. You can see the rate over the last few years. September 2016, we had a 77.3% with all grades. The following spring, Spring 17, it was 78.5. And this past spring, it was 78.0. That's what it currently stands at. What's not included in this is about 2% of our grades that are associated with dual enrollment that's offside at the high schools. And the reason for that is the public schools haven't finished yet. So, they have a few more weeks of school. That's generally going to result in about a 0.3% to 0.5% increase, since the vast majority of those students will receive a C or better. So, I expect us to be pretty close to where we were last spring from an overall standpoint. This is an overall course success rates over a longer time period, and this goes from 2010-11 up through 1617. We first started looking at this actually last spring. But I want to share this data as complete years to show that we see a consistent increase from an overall perspective. It's actually almost 5% increase in success rates from the year of 1011 up through 1617. These are the overall student comparisons. These are for all students, all grades. As I mentioned before, we're down about a half percent. This shows 16, 17, and 18, and then we show both a two-year difference and a one-year difference. When we look at our two-year differences across, you'll see mostly or slightly up, but I want to focus on the one-year differences. I think that's the most important right now. About a half percent down overall, fairly similar when we look at male and females. When we look at ethnicity, we're down a little further with Black African-American students, down 1.9%. And then, we look at male ethnicities, we see that same trend with Black African-American students, down 2.9% as we look spring to spring. Our next breakdown is first-time in college students. So, these would be students who would come to the college for the first time after graduating high school. And just to give you an idea of magnitude, typically in the spring, we're going to have about half as many first-time in college students as we would in the fall, and as we sit this summer, it's about half again. And that makes sense because a large percentage of these first-time in college students are coming right out of high school or near graduation of high school. When we look at this data overall, our first-time in college students are down 1.2%. Here, we see a slightly higher decrease when we look at our male students. They're down 2.5%. Female students are actually up 1.4. When we dive into ethnicity, and this is a trend we're going to see as we dive further in the data, our Hispanic students had the largest decrease. They were down 7.9%. When we break into the male ethnicity category, we're going to see again, male Hispanic students are down 12.2%. Now, if you've been following the data over the last few semesters, we're seeing fluctuations between our African-American students and our Hispanic-Latino students, and this time it has fallen to them. For FDIC developmental courses, we are actually up. Now, I'm going to talk in a little while about Senate Bill 1720. I know we've had that conversation before about students who graduated after 2007. This was put in place in 2014. Now, have options whether to test for developmental education or actually participate in developmental education based on the state statute. But for our developmental students, which were seen as a declining number, they were actually up 4.1%. Our male, our female students were up 7.4%. And then, for ethnicity, our largest increase was our white students at 4.7, closely followed by our Black African-American students at 4.4. For the male ethnicity, we see a 7.3 increase for our white students, 5.8% decrease for our Black African males. And again, the Hispanics were down 12.0 for our Hispanic-Latino male students. This is gateway courses. And you saw in the previous slide, I've started to put ends in because the ends do get very small when we start breaking down into these subgroups, especially when we look at male ethnicity categories. So, for the Hispanic-Latino males that I just mentioned was down 12%, that represented 25 grades, not 25 students, but actually 25 grades. When we compare over here to gateway courses, now the numbers are getting larger because students are choosing to go against a recommendation and go right into these gateway courses. Gateway courses were down 3.2%. Our male students were down 4.1%. When we look at ethnicity, Hispanic Latinos were down 9.1%. And then, male ethnicity, the Hispanic Latino males were down 10.3%. So, backing up on flex placement students, again, as I mentioned before, they have a choice on whether or not to participate in developmental education. So, we can inform them to hopefully make the best possible choice. We have created a prediction model, and that prediction model allows us to come up with three specific classifications for students based on their historical performance in high school. So, we're looking at likely college-ready, dev-ed recommended, or dev-ed strongly recommended in each of the three areas: reading, writing, and mathematics.
Before you leave that.
Sure.
Why do we give them a choice?
That was done by the state, and we've had lots of conversations about that. We've also had conversations about why 2007 was chosen, and that we have not gotten any reason rationale why the legislature decided that 2007 was the year they picked, as opposed to students in 2006 weren't college-ready, but the students in 2007 were automatically college-ready. Sure.
Mr. Foster, so Senator Negron, in his infinite wisdom back then, thought that students should be immediately ready to go into college courses. So, I think it was 1720 at the time that got rid of basically onboarding and all of those courses that would allow for students to, if there was a gap, once we tested them, if there was a gap, that we put them in the courses and allowed them to catch up. In fact, we had made such gains that we went to Senator Negron to show him that we don't leave students in a class for an entire semester. So, if you tested in math, right, and you were, say, fractions was that piece that you did not do well on, on the entrance exam, or the exam for us to be able, placement exam is what it's called, placement test. If you did not do well on fractions, then we would give you a four- or five-week tutorial or six-week tutorial just on fractions. You go back and take the test, and then you were pretty much, in most cases, you were prepared to go into that first MAT or whatever it's called, math class, or even in writing ENC 1101, there were some deficiencies in your writing. We had done such a good job at St. Pete College, where we had like, I think it was something around 70 or 75% of those students that had taken those remedial kind of courses to be able to help them where they weren't a full semester, unlike most colleges, they leave you in their full semester. We were finding ways to be innovative and make sure that they were spending their time focused on the things that they didn't know, as opposed to the things they did know, and then they were very successful. We had seen just around 75%.
We were seeing consistently double-digit gains for male students, Hispanic, Latino, and Black.
When Dr. Law and myself sat down with Senator Negron, he, I told him this was going to hurt minority students the most. And I don't know why he did it, but he insisted on doing it, and he has been since. And then, you know, Joseph, a friend of mine, I make that disclaimer, but he has been on the attack of community colleges since, and he did not listen, and yet, here we are dealing with these problems, because he said that the student, the only, the only thing that he did give on was that the student could make the decision whether to go into remediation or not. Well, if I'm a student and I don't know that I'm deficient in those areas, and I take a test, and they tell me I'm deficient in those areas, then, you know, then my back's up, and I got to prove something to somebody, as opposed to wanting to actually go into this course that can help me. And now, we're seeing the results of 1720, where we're making double-digit gains and making students successful, helping to be successful through, as opposed to now, we're going backwards every semester, trying to figure out how to get them to understand, students to understand that, you know, you may have been out of school for 20 years, and you just, this is something that, you just need this little remediation to be able to help you move along. And so, that's just a backdrop of history there on that. We did go to them. In fact, we were the only trustee and president that got a meeting with Senator Negron that year, because nobody, he would meet with nobody else. And I twisted his arm, and we went in, and he listened, but of course, he did not change his mind, so.
So, basically, we used to have a requirement to take the placement test, and now we do not, except for a certain amount of people who have a GED, or those who earned a standard high school diploma from the state of Florida from 2006 backwards, right? They have to.
Yeah, so the cutoff line is 2007, but the complexity is, it wasn't everybody. In fact, when this originally came out, we had made the suggestion, let's just change this for everybody, because it's very difficult on our advising staff that for these flex placement students, they have to meet with each one to have these conversations. So, it adds complexity. If you are not in that exempt category, and we call it flex placement and non-flex placement, it's confusing for students. And if you didn't graduate, you know, you have to be in ninth grade and 12th grade in a public high school and graduate with a regular diploma. So, if you didn't meet those requirements, you've moved to the state in 10th grade, you're not in this classification, and now you have to test. So, it is somewhat confusing legislation at times, and it does negatively impact our students and have a stress overall. That said, these are the cards we're dealt. So, we have a responsibility to do what's best for these students, and we are constantly looking for ways to improve the information that you see and looking for ways on how we can better inform students and how we can build in our curriculum to support our students need to be successful. This dives down a little bit more in those classifications. So, I'm going to, in a little while, bring down reading and writing, but I wanted to focus on math, so I could kind of explain how the format works. What you see there under math is MAT 1033 and MAT 1100. That's our intermediate algebra course and our quantitative mathematics course, quantitative reasoning, that we have as a gateway courses for students to first take versus our remedial or developmental courses you see below. The first, second column there is all first-time in college students. You can see their success rates. Students do a little bit better overall in the developmental courses than they do in the gateway courses. And then, I've added the ends, the numbers in there when we look at the three classifications: likely college-ready, dev-ed recommended, dev-ed strongly recommended. We've automated the system, so once we get their transcripts, we automatically spit out what classification they are. But what you can see there is for our likely college students, the vast majority went into the gateway, to one of the two gateway math courses. Six of them probably felt uncomfortable with mathematics and chose to go ahead and take developmental. developmental, and you can see they performed a little bit better by doing so. But our last two columns, the yellow highlight, is really those students who didn't take our recommendation, who we felt should have been in those remedial courses based on their prior high school performance, who didn't take our choice and went forward. And you can see, while the success rates aren't tremendously far apart, you see some differences there. And there are some students that kind of jump in the fire and do perform, and we kind of see that there when we look at the DEV Ed strongly recommended. While it's only 48.3%, they are outperforming their colleagues that are doing, sticking to developmental, who have that much longer time to get into the gateway. So there are some pros and cons with the legislation, but it is a stress to the college. When we look at writing and reading, I want you to pay attention to the ends that you see in the developmental at a course rows. They start to get very, very small. And when we get down to reading, these are the smallest I've seen. We have one student that took our recommendation for DEV Ed recommended, and only 11 students that take our recommendation for DEV Ed strongly recommended. Now, part of that is kind of the social stigma about being in an environment, and it's easy to say, I'm not very good at math. It's not so easy to say, I'm not very good at reading or writing. And even though we're talking about a college rigor level of those, not that they can't read or write, but the college rigor component, there's still that perception of uncomfortableness, and this is impacting what we see in terms of our success rates. Any questions on that? Okay, so just real quick noteworthy observations. You see, we have a slight decrease overall. I anticipate that to change and that gap close, if not be flat, when we get in our off-site dual enrollment grades. We see the increase that we've had over that timeline, only almost 5%. We see a decrease in FTIC students overall, an increase in DEV Ed with the Hispanic students being the lowest of that group, they were one of the exceptions at down 12%. We see in gateway courses, an overall 3.2% decrease. Again, Hispanic male students were down 10.3%. And then in most cases, the flex placement students performed better when taking our recommendation. We are continuing to work on this. We have dug into some more of our data. We're specifically beginning to look at the socioeconomic status of some of those and see how that plays in there. We use Pell status as a proxy, but you know, a lot of our students are on Pell, but we'll begin to dig that and cross-reference the data we have here to find out if there's some elements there and things that we can do to support. We're also doing a lot of work on the library support services piece to understand there's more we can do to get students to participate in those activities because we know the more times you go to learning support, the higher percentage you're going to get in terms of success rate. Any questions I can answer?
Dr. Carragio, I'm Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Dr. Carragio, maybe for the board members that weren't here, it may make sense, Dr. Williams, to give kind of a tutorial on what we were doing and what kind of gains we were making with the program that was in place, and then what happened, what pulled the rug from underneath us. There is some new leadership. I'm not sure if President Galvano feels the same way about community colleges as this Negron did or does, because he still serves in the Senate, but maybe it would be helpful for us to give that background to show what we were doing, what was in place, and then how we were making those gains. Because this number frustrates me every time that I hear it now because we had this particular problem fixed to the extent that we were making gains and helping people get through the programs. And sometimes it's, like I said, you know, you got to remember, our average student is what, 27 years old?
Right.
And so, you know, a lot of times, it's folks that are returning to college as opposed to just entering colleges. So maybe, I think for a history lesson, it would be helpful for the board to know where we've been, to know how we got to this point. Ms. Bello, I think, saw a lot of that because we did a lot of it for many years, but it would be helpful for the rest of the board to know what we did and how we got here because I think it would be helpful from the standpoint, when they're talking to legislators, they can say, look, we know how to do this. All we need is the opportunity to do it again and put people in a position to be successful as opposed to what we have currently.
Thank you.
And even if we could get to a point where we required the test, not requiring the participation in developmental education, but even requiring the test because it's one more bit of information, that would be helpful for a student to be able to see those results.
Because you don't know where they're lacking anymore.
Right, and they just don't want to take a test, and they, you know, so they tend to opt out of it.
You have no predictors whatsoever, and then you throw them in a class, ENC 1101, and they wonder why it's like a whole bunch of red ink on their paper. I mean, if you don't know where the comma goes, then of course, you're going to get a lot of red ink, right? So, I mean, I think it allowed us to have the data, is what Jesse said before, and be able to determine whether or not they were going to be successful in these courses.
Mrs. Cole.
Have we looked at the financial implication of this as well? If the number of support services that we've instituted just in the past year since I've been on the board, I constantly hear, we're adding this, we're adding that to try to, because we were forced to go to this model. Do we have a dollar amount that we could guesstimate that's placed on each student that is, you know, the ones that go and don't succeed, and therefore were either they're taking the class again, and their Pell Grant's not paying for it, or because they don't pay for duplication in classes, or we're paying for it, or what other services?
They will up to a certain point, but you're right. And especially if it's students doing loans to be able to do it, that's more money out of their pocket from a loan standpoint.
Right.
We can certainly, we have done some of the data, the number analysis, the financial piece, and we can bring some of that back. I know the board, over the years, that Trustee Givens mentioned, was very supportive of the changes we did make. And when we were having a lot of those gains, there was investment that the board put into what we did in terms of increasing advisors and supports, tutors, that we did put into help at that time when we were making the gains. And some of that's still in place, but we can bring some of that back.
I'd be interested in some of those numbers, and just from the board's standpoint, at the recent St. Pete College Foundation meeting, we were talking about the number of scholarships that the foundation provides to the college and how that money is utilized by the college. And it triggered, in my mind, that a scholarship of a dollar doesn't equate to a dollar of student services anymore. It equates most likely to $2, $3, $4, especially for perhaps our scholarship students who are very worthy and in need. And I think that was a conversation that because the foundation board does not hear these types of conversations on a regular basis, that didn't, they didn't necessarily understand my comments that while the scholarship money coming in is money to the college to pay for that student's instruction, it might not actually be paying in its entirety for that student's instruction. And there's a lot of other costs associated with that. So I think that that would be, I would like to see as, I know we can't get exact because every student's different, but even a guesstimate.
We can give you some ballpark numbers.
That was my first question. Then my second one was at graduation on Saturday, Dr. Williams and her preliminary comments talked about how our graduates were two to one female to male. And I was curious, in these student success numbers, can we get a baseline of what our student population is in each of these categories, not just...
Sure. So percent of male, percent of female, and then break down ethnicity and age, some of those things.
Just get the baseline number first as well?
Sure. Yeah. We can do that.
So, Mr. Chair.
I'll piggyback, because I think you were going somewhere, and I'm not sure that where you were going got all the way communicated.
Okay.
Not only the cost to the student, but the cost to the college.
Oh, yes. That is the bottom line.
Yeah, is what I would like to see both of, if that's possible. And again, not exact, we can't, but as close to that as possible.
We'll work on putting it together.
And if I could, and that is a great point. I think the only language they speak in Tallahassee is money. And so I think if you come up with real data that can demonstrate the cost of failure, not only with real money, but the societal cost of failure, cost to the college, cost to the state of Florida, whether it's squandered grant money, squandered scholarships, I mean, because if they're failing, there is a cost of failure. And so I think that data would speak volumes in Tallahassee. So I think you raised a great point with that. I think reality has set in, and, you know, I'm not going to say anything that I wouldn't say to Dr. Grego, but some of our kids coming out of the Pinellas County school system are not college-ready.
Some?
Yeah, okay. I'm trying to be nice. That's the reality. And when I said, why do we give them a choice, I kind of knew the legislation behind it, and I appreciate Trustee Givens' detail and his efforts on that. But I still think, and tell me if I'm wrong, or if this is an end around, but I still think the students can have a choice, because even in your presentation, you put choice in kind of an air quote. You either take a placement test, or you have AP credits on your transcript that indicate a higher level of understanding, or you're automatically assigned to a development math or reading. That's where you start. So the students can still have a choice. You can't do that.
No. No, we cannot do that. We cannot mandate and make them take the placement test if they fit in.
But no, I'm not saying you mandate them take the test.
You say and put them in the placement.
No, they can go right into college. They can go right into college level. We can't, we can't say, we can't say, well, you don't have to take the placement test, but all of the information we have indicate you should be in this course, so that's the one you're taking. No, they get to go right into college level.
If they decide not to do it, you do.
Nope. You can only recommend.
That's what the legislation says.
You can only recommend, but you cannot mandate a course.
Has to be their choice.
We'll bring back the legislative...
Mr. Foster brings up another good point, though. I think, Trustee Foster, you bring up an excellent point, and I'm not going to beat up on the superintendent. I know people think I like to do that, I don't, but they think we're the 13th grade, and I continue to say that. You know, he got upset when we had our joint board meeting with them because I said 40% of our students, which I was right, Mr. Carragio will tell you, I was right, 40% of our students that come out of the public school system are not prepared for college. Now, how are we supposed to get them prepared if you've had them for 12 years and they're not ready to go? But to your point, your point of making the dollars argument in Tallahassee, I think any other time would be good to utilize that document in terms of what's the cost of failure. But with a 3%, virtually, everybody has a job unemployment rate in the state of Florida, less than 3%. Nobody's focused on that. They're talking about how successful they are getting people going to work, but they don't know they're lacking in skills. And what happens? Well, soon as the economy takes a downturn, they come back to St. Pete College, right? And then we're dealing with this enormous amount of people who are underprepared to be in the workforce, but have jobs because the demand is there. And then we got to try to fix them and get them back out into the workforce with the skills that they've been lacking all along. So I do agree that I think that the cost of failure now should be presented so that when this happens in the future, we can say, we tried to present this to you now so that you can see. And maybe somebody will listen because it is based on dollars and cents of how we can be more responsible with the funding from the college to get people prepared for work. But I think with the unemployment rate so low in Florida that we may fall on deaf ears because they're going to say, well, look, people are working, what are you talking about? But they're not looking ahead that when the economy takes that downturn again, that folks are going to be back out in the street because they're, right now, you're taking a body, and you're making them a dishwasher, or you're doing this, or you're teaching them how to wait tables. I mean, it's all service-related stuff, a lot of it, and we're just preparing ourselves for this big falloff. It's almost like, I don't know that young lady's song, but it's a song that says, when you get to the top, look, look, prepare yourself for the fall. And we're not preparing ourselves for the fall, and I think what you're saying is right on spot in terms of being able to do that.
Well, the only other way I see it to rephrase that question or choice, as you talked about, Mr. Foster, is to offer more incentives to get people to take the placement test or enter into the developmental coursework, incentivize them to do that. And I know, aren't we, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't there some sort of incentive offers now to do that?
Well, we do share with them the pass rate of students who don't take our choices. You know, we have some cards that say, for students who are in this situation and take our choice, this is how successful they are versus students who went this route or they're successful. So we do share that kind of information with them to help encourage them to make those choices. But we've, ever since it's been implemented in 2014, we've seen every year consistently fewer and fewer percentages of students taking our recommendation.
Could the high school require them to take it before they leave? Could we give them the test and say, Dr. Grego, what would help us to place students is we give you this test, and every 12th grader, you give it to them on one day?
Well, we do work with the high schools, and they still take the placement test. But keep in mind, the majority of our enrollment are non-high school graduates. They're older adults who are 27, 30, 40, who haven't been in high school for 10, 15, 20 years. And so that is the larger number of our enrollment, more than our high school completers, those who come straight from high school.
I understand that, but it would help, I think that the ones that we see that, I hate to say this, that Mike Bennett probably has more of a problem with, and that I would have more of a problem with, is those students that are here two semesters, they're gone. Those are usually the younger students because they don't, they don't really, they're not focused, they're just trying to get their financial aid and do some other stuff, and then they get these bad grades, and they're like, well, you're not financially eligible anymore, right?
It's a wide variety.
Yeah, it would be a lot of, a lot of stuff, I think, that it would affect, but if we could get...
But our high school students, we still give the placement test in the high schools.
So it is, and we have that. Do we get that there?
Especially for those dual- enrolled students and other students in the high school.
It's required for dual enrollment. It's a mandate.
No, for dual enrollment, but I mean, for the regular high school student that is graduating next week, has that student taken the placement test?
Not all of them, no.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that if all of them were required by the school district, not by us, because the legislation deals with colleges, doesn't deal with the high school. So maybe we give them the test, ask the school board to make it a mandate that you take that test, and then give, provide us with the data, even if you're not coming here. Because guess what? I got a student right now that went to Florida State, well, that was a wrong move in the first place, but went to Florida State and is coming back here, we would have the information to probably know why they didn't do well at Florida State. And we, guess what? Guess who's got a triage of that student? St. Pete College. But we have no data, because guess me, trust me, Florida State's not going to give us any information about why they failed, because they don't have the time to do that. You're either prepared to go to Florida State, or Florida, or FIU, or anywhere else, and they're expecting that student to come in there and do great. They don't have time to be knowing why you're failing. If you haven't gone any learning labs on their campuses, they couldn't probably tell you what's going on in your study habits or anything related to that. That's why I'm saying, if the school system, if we could get them to actually partner with us on one thing, this is what I would think would be a big one, is get them to actually say, one day, we will have every high school junior or senior take this test and then provide us with the data. And we can hold on to that data for three to five years, because I guarantee you, most of them, Dr. Carragio, Dr. Williams, you'll probably see at some point.
At some point.
And then we know what we're dealing with, but right now, we don't even know what we're dealing with. The other people that are coming back to college, that's a little bit more difficult because they're usually, they've been out in the workforce, they've been making decisions, most of them have families, and they think every decision that they're making is usually a good one, and they're a little embarrassed. And we got to figure out how to onboard them, I think, a little bit better to make sure they're more comfortable being in these remedial courses. But let's control the thing that we can. I mean, if we can get them to partner with us and make them take that test, then we at least have the data. We don't have anything right now, you know, except for dual enrollment, we have to have, right? That's a requirement. But other than that, we don't have that data.
Gotcha.
We need to press on. Any other quick comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carragio.
Thank you.
We'll move to our budget and finance. Ms. Hunt with the monthly budget report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board trustees, Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
This morning, I'm going to give you a budget report. As of April 30, 2018, we are 83% in the fiscal year. We have two months left. So first, we'll look at our revenue for our student tuition and fees. At the end of this period, we are at $60.5 million in student tuition and fees, which is approximately 98, 99% of our budget. Yesterday, we had our summer courses begin, and so I'm... And so I'm pleased to report, as of yesterday, our summer enrollment was 2.2% higher than what we projected, which equates to about $422,000 over the fiscal year. Next, on our state funding, we are at $56.1 million. Our overall revenue at $124.3 million, which is about 86% through the fiscal year. Next, we'll focus on our expenditures. As I mentioned on the last slide, we're 83% through the year. You see our personnel and benefits. We are right on target with where we are in the fiscal year. And then our current expense and capital combined, we are at $21.8 million expended. Overall, operating expense at $106 million. In comparison to prior fiscal year, we have spent $4.5 million less this fiscal year. Looking at our revenue over our expenditures, we are at $8.2 million. I mentioned a couple months ago that we will see that number decline. I have been monitoring the projections for the remainder of the fiscal year. Right now, I'm projecting about $27 million that we will spend in May and June. We have budgeted $1.8 million in our reserve. We're expected to spend less than $1 million of that amount. So now I want to look at our lab fee schedule. About five years ago, the college changed how we calculate and assess lab fees. Before the change, each course with a lab component was assessed a different lab fee. The new process combined the courses into program discipline groups. This change resulted in a couple outcomes. One, it reduced the number of fees that were on the lab fee schedule. And two, it distributed the costs evenly between the discipline group, which lowered the cost to students. This slide before you is our proposal for our upcoming fiscal year 1819. Although there are no proposal changes to fee increase on the fee amounts, there are some proposed changes to the actual discipline groups. On the left, you'll see that we would like to add six brand-new courses that will be offered at the college to the engineering tech group. And on the right, we would like to delete 11 courses. These courses are deleted either, one, because the course is no longer offered at the college, or, two, because the course no longer has a lab component. Are there any questions to the lab fee changes? If there are not any questions, I seek approval to approve the changes to the lab fee schedule.
Do I have a motion to approve the lab fee changes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And now, we'd like to call up Mr. Miles with our proposed 2018-19 budget. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Williams. My name is Brian Miles, and as the chairman just said, I'll be briefing you on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. The budget team has been hard at work this spring. We've been crunching the numbers and reallocating funds where necessary, realigning things, reorganizing structure to make sure we come to you with a balanced budget this year. And I feel that we have been able to do that. What I'm gonna do for you this morning is give you a higher-level overview of what we're proposing. If you feel the need to do a deeper dive with me between now and the June board meeting, when we ask for your approval on the budget, please let me know. I'm more than happy to schedule individual meetings with you to go through the numbers on the proposed budget. Okay, we'll take a look at our revenue side of the budget first. As you know, much of our budget is driven by student tuition fees, which is based on enrollment. And here you see a slight uptick in the projected tuition and fees for the new fiscal year. This is based primarily on some increase in enrollment that we're seeing in PSAV, post-secondary adult vocational programs, and also some of our Workforce Institute non-credit programs. We are also projecting a slightly more favorable enrollment projection for the new fiscal year. As you know, this past fiscal year, we budgeted down 3.5%. We have realized a little bit, or we think we'll realize, better numbers than what we budgeted for. We think we'll finish a little bit better than negative 3.5% on the year, which is good for budget purposes. It's also good for morale purposes, I think. So we're gonna go into the new fiscal year and budget down only 3%. And so you'll see that the tuition is based on those two factors, and it's a little bit more favorable than what we came to you with last year. State funding, as I explained at the last board meeting, we are seeing a shift of about $2 million from the Florida College System Program Fund, which decreased from $53.5 million to $51.5 million for the new fiscal year. And that $2 million will be made up in lottery funding, an increase to about $16 million from $14 million. As I also explained last time, this means that for cash flow purposes, we have to monitor what we're spending throughout the fall because we will receive those lottery funds later in the year. Performance funding, we still don't know where we stand yet. We had a call to the state recently, and we're still not sure how it will be categorized, whether gold, silver, bronze, or purple. We believe will be at least silver, and so we've budgeted about $3.5 million. Half of that would be our institutional investment. The other half would be new state dollars as a result of that silver categorization. Other revenues, this is your indirect costs, interest, dividends, also facilities rentals. And we're seeing a little bit of a downturn in that revenue, but we'll work on getting that back up in the new fiscal year. Currently, we're gonna budget down for that. Fund transfers in, this is partly due to our decline in bookstore sales. Logic would dictate that as enrollment declines, so do your book sales. And so we're budgeting down that category. This is also a result of budgeting more last year for our fund transfers in. And this is auxiliary funds. We increased the amount of funds we transferred in last year to about $3.8 million. We typically do about $3.3 to $3.5 million, so we're gonna bring it back down this year to $3.1 million. And we did that last year to balance last year's budget. And as Jeanette mentioned, we continue to reduce our reliance on fund balance, use of that fund balance. This past year, we budgeted $1.8 million. We'll go into the new fiscal year budgeting only $1 million. We expect to only use about $700,000 as we finish '17-'18, and we hope to use less than $1 million for '18-'19. We will continue to monitor to bring that to a zero amount in the last, at the end of next year. Overall, we'll decrease our revenue to $143.4 million. That is a change of $900,000. Let's look at the expense side of the budget. You can see at the top that we are reducing the expense associated with personnel. You look in the first three line items, faculty, administrative, and professional, career service. This is a result of our reorganization efforts. It's a result of not filling vacancies. It's a result of realigning resources and some funding that we have. We will continue to monitor our personnel expense ratio. It's currently down to 77%. It was at 78% for a part of this year. So we're still working to bring that down to 75%, which we said we would do through our three-year financial plan. And as you know, as the revenue projections go down, that ratio goes up. So every time we budget down on revenue, we have to bring this down as well. Sure.
What doesn't yet other benefits?
Where are you looking?
Under health insurance.
I was thinking about $43,000 increase here earlier.
Sure. We have a number of other benefits. Some of this includes premiums. Some of it is OPEB, and so it's other post-employment benefits, what retirees and other employees who leave the college would earn after they leave. We'll continue to...
Are we just having more people retire and take advantage of these benefits?
We have. We are seeing an increase, and we'll see that over the next few years. Right now, we're taking a look at our drop candidates and also our retirees. And over the next few years, we're gonna see a spike in those number of people leaving the college. We've had a lot of employees who have been here 30, 40 years, and so they'll be leaving us in fairly high numbers over the next three to five years. So we'll be budgeting for that and planning for it. We'll continue to look at our health insurance. Here, you see a slight decrease in the amount we're budgeting for. That's a result of reducing the number of employees that we have at the college. But as you'll hear in just a little bit, our health insurance costs, for the most part, continue to rise. And so that's why we've gone to market this year through an RFP to make sure we have the most competitive health insurance benefits for our employees. Under current expense, you see a $1.7 million increase. That is largely due to the upgrade of our PeopleSoft student system that we have to undertake this year. Currently, we use version 9.0. Oracle will stop supporting this version in December 2019. And so we have to convert to version 9.2. We have identified the top-ranked vendor after going to market with an RFP for this. And we're negotiating the contract now, and we'll be back soon with a recommendation on who we select to take on that project. We're estimating anywhere between $1.3 and $1.8 million for that project. And we're gonna try and identify other sources of funding that we can use to help offset that cost. But right now, we have it programmed for about $1.7 million difference in current expense.
Brian, is that a one-time fee just to change over? Or is that gonna be an annual?
No, it's a one-time fee. It's part of the conversion to the upgraded version. We have to hire consultants to help us with that. And so that's all part of that fee. So this brings us to a total operating budget of $143.4 million and leaves us with a difference of $900,000, giving us a balanced budget for the year. Let me just go back to one thing I mentioned on the revenue side of the budget. I mentioned it last meeting, and I just want to clarify it. Last meeting, I told you that the difference in state funds from last year to this year was about $700,000. I need to correct what I said. It's actually about $230,000. We had some MLK funds worked into that that should not have been included in that. So the difference is about $200,000 rather than $700,000. Just wanted to provide a point of clarification there. We will continue to monitor the budget, as we always do. We are currently discussing going to zero-based budgeting over the course of the next year to flatten everything, see where our true expenses are. It's been some time since we've taken this approach to budgeting, and we feel that it's probably a good time to do that. And we're also considering starting to budget by department and program so we can see what the actual revenue and expense is from a program, and we can gauge better what is actually contributing in a positive manner to our bottom line versus what's contributing in a negative way.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll now move to administrative matters and our personnel report. Board, you have that in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, so moved. And now, if Ms. Mantega would please step forward for our health insurance update.
Good morning, Dr. Williams, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Michelle Montega. I'm the Senior Manager of Benefits and Wellness. So I'm here today to give you an update on our employee health insurance program. So this first slide is a high-level overview of the information that's contained in your packet. You can see that our health claims are increasing. Over the last few years, we've been increasing at about 5% to 6% per year. In 2017, we increased 10% in our claims. And in 2018, we're already about 10% higher than we were at this time last year in our claims. We also had an increase in our high-dollar claims, or these are continuing to increase. In 2017, we had 24 claims that exceeded $100,000. It's an increase from where we've been in previous years. We're seeing a decline in our employee participation. We're also seeing a transfer of where employees are participating. They're moving into the high-deductible health plan, which is to be expected since that's the only plan that we're offering to new employees. Downside is that that has lower premiums coming into the college because the cost share is shifting over to the employee. And so all of this is kind of trickling down into our self-funded account balance, which is decreasing. So this slide is just a visualization of what we just talked about. You can see, over the last few years, kind of the steady increase. And then in 2017, the jump about 10%. That gray line at the top of the screen is just showing you the projection for 2018. We're expecting our claims to be around $20 million for the year. That'll be about a 5% increase from where we were last year. So we have a few strategies in place to try to contain these costs. Some of our long-term strategies, we're working on employee education and the wellness program. Short-term strategy is analyzing the vendor fees, and we're doing that through the request for proposals that we have out at the market. In this request, we're asking vendors to meet or exceed, at least come close to what we currently have so that it's something new and different to our employees. So our proposal was published on DemandStar through our brokers on March 5. The deadline for proposals closed on March 26. We did not accept any proposals outside of the deadline, and all of the SPC benefits were advertised for bids. As a result, or the results that we came in from this, on the medical side, we did ask for both proposals on being fully insured and self-insured. So we had five carriers come back with proposals if we remained self-insured. Three carriers gave us proposals if we were to move to going fully insured. And then we had five carriers who declined to quote, typically with a decline to quotes because they could not meet or exceed our current benefits. So then for the rest of the carriers, just to point out, on the RX line, what we're talking about there is a pharmacy benefit manager, which is a carve-out program where they analyze your pharmacy costs separate from your medical plan. So then you can see, we did dental vision. The health accounts there, we're talking about our health savings account, our flexible spending account, additional coverage. We're talking about life insurance, disability. And then work sites, where we're talking about the hospital, cancer, accident insurance, things along those lines. So the selection criteria we will use is a matrix that is included in your packet that you can look at. But so the benefits team, the brokers, are going through the first selection process to bring the top three results to the insurance committee. The insurance committee will then review the results of the top three for each plan type and then make the final recommendation that we'll bring to the board for approval at the, hopefully, the June meeting. And just to share, the insurance committee is made up of 28 members. 11 are faculty members, 5 are career service members, and 12 are administrative and professional members. This is our timeline with our next steps. You can see, we're kind of right in the middle right now. We just had our first selection meeting, and the insurance committee is gonna be meeting tomorrow. So we're kind of right smack dab in the middle of it right now. This is an aggressive timeline. We're hoping to have the board vote for approval on our selections at the June meeting so that we can have plenty of time to implement any changes and educate employees on these changes. Since last year, there were some complaints that we didn't have enough time, so we want to make sure we have an abundance of time to get through it. So that's it in a nutshell. Do we have any questions?
I have one. Going back to the long-term strategies with employee education and a wellness program, are there any statistics that show how effective those are, what kind of percentage reduction in claims we might have by implementing some of those plans?
So yes and no. So what we looked at was what are large employers doing nationwide to contain health insurance costs?
Right.
So those are the top two driving approaches that large employers are taking. A lot of it has to deal with, your return is gonna come with how much time we invest as a college into education and the wellness program. If we don't put enough resources in it, we won't have the right type of return. So that's kind of where that's at.
So we invest more, in theory, we get?
A better return.
Better return.
Anybody else?
We look forward to hearing from you next month. Thank you. Okay, we will move to Mr. Wechter with a construction update.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
I have two items for your consideration today. First, a update on the progress of the very appropriately-named Joseph Lang Student Success Center at St. Petersburg Gibbs. And secondly, for your consideration and approval, the annual capital improvement plan that we are due to submit to the Department of Education on the 1st of July. This is a view of the eastern side of the Student Success Center. That is the second floor, as you would be leaving the actual conference center. It's quite a spectacular building. This is going to be a flagship building in the inventory of St. Petersburg College facilities. So we are excited and anxious as we move forward. This is a nighttime view of that same eastern side, kind of taken from Eagle Lake. There's quite a large learning plaza that you see in the foreground. Again, a spectacular view. That'd be looking at it essentially from 66th Street as you drive south or north. This is a picture that was taken last week, almost one week ago today, of the project progress. This was a snapshot taken from a live webcam that is constantly monitoring the progress of the building. Take note specifically of the height of the masonry walls because today, we will look at the current view, if we can get the link to work. There it is today. Scaffolding is erected. We are above the eight-foot level. So now all the bracing starts and all the complicated part of those masonry walls. This is honestly the most exciting part of any construction project from the visible standpoint. There is a lot going on. And you can literally see every day progress on the project. Those walls will continue to rise to a three-story level. And then the steel starts and the intermediate floors and the roof and all of that kind of stuff. It's, again, it's very exciting. And you can literally see progress every single day on the project. I want to mention one of the items that has been accomplished already. When we did the Phase One package, which was the, all of the underground utilities, the water, the sewer, the chiller, the electrical lines, we also did some parking lot improvements. And the building footprint is the yellow highlighted area in the dead center of this snapshot. The red arrow that you see that's highlighted on the bottom right is a new parking lot that has been completed and opened. We opened it during the spring break week. And essentially, what it does is it ties that 66th Street parking entrance to the Fifth Avenue parking lots. So we lost a little parking with this new building footprint, but we gained some parking through the opening and construction of this new parking lot. It's provided a tremendous benefit to the college traffic flow, if you will. And we have some other improvements planned for some of those Fifth Avenue lots that will make things even better. That's open and operating. So we're, that's really good improvement. As we do all this heavy work on the site, this has been one benefit that we've been able to take advantage of already. Some of the activities that I want to talk about specifically. Phase One, the board approved several months ago, and that is now complete. Phase Two is what we are in process right now. That involves all of the masonry, the foundations, the structural steel is part of that. We were able to take advantage of getting our structural steel purchased before the tariffs were imposed. And so we achieved some good savings there. The intermediate floors are part of the Phase Two project, as is the roof. Once the roof is complete, we will be done with Phase Two. The next phase, which we plan to bring to you in August or September, and I'll talk in detail about how that's going to work, is what we hope will be our final guaranteed maximum price. So if you look at the bottom of this slide, you'll see that the project is currently funded 19.5 with the appropriation that was awarded this year, the $3.5 million plus the college's share of the match for that $3.5 million. The project budget will be 23.875. Now, so the Phase Three progress, if you will. Final construction drawings are being delivered to the college this week. The contractor will then put together the bid packages. There's a lengthy advertising requirement, statutory advertising required. That takes three to four weeks. All of that will be happening at the same time that we're ready to accept a delivery of the July 1 appropriation, we hope, of that $3.5 million. So as the two activities come together, the compilation of that guaranteed maximum price and the delivery of the $3.5 million we will bring to you at the time, the guaranteed maximum price for the entire project. What we hope we don't have to do is get held up with the funding. You know it's contingent upon some FEMA, release of some FEMA funds. We hope that that doesn't slow down the process. All of that to say, we are closely monitoring progress. If we see in the next few weeks that there are any complications related to that funding or the guaranteed maximum price delivery, we may come back to you in June and ask for some interim approval methods to keep the project on schedule and moving forward. We do not anticipate any delays. We have contingency plans to get things approved and keep things moving along until all of those other stars align for final approval of the guaranteed maximum price. Are there any questions about that?
Any questions?
Okay. My second item of business today is the capital improvement plan. We usually bring this to you in June, but we have it ready. It's very straightforward this year. This is hard to read, and I apologize for that. The top section represents our repair, renovation, and maintenance money. That's a standard request. And that is one item of the PICO appropriations that have been fairly constant over the years. So we will receive about $2.7 million of that this year. And we expect to, it's a complicated formula that derives that, but we expect a similar appropriation next year. But our ask is always where it needs to be in that category. But the important thing for your consideration is below that, in the bottom section, is Phase A and Phase B of our Health Education Center renovation money. If you recall previous presentations, the Health Education Revitalization Project is a three-faced approach. Phase A is on this request, Phase B is on this request, and Phase Three will appear in Year Three as soon as we get some additional paperwork submitted to the state. The state requires a hefty amount of documentation regarding the condition of the existing building. We all know the condition of that building. We know that we just need to get that paperwork formalized to the state. And then it will become a Year Three request with a total ask for that project of somewhere in the neighborhood of about $80 million. Current request for the first two years is just in the ballpark of $50 million. So I ask for your approval of the capital improvement plan. We'll get that prepared to submit to the state in a timely manner. Are there any questions?
Any comments or questions?
I do. We, I know that the administration's been looking at overall our use of buildings and our facilities. And the Chair and I went on a tour, including the Health Education Center. And that hasn't come back to us with any specific recommendations based on the analysis of the facilities. But how does the anticipated construction of a new building on that campus fit in with the overall strategy that we're going to be looking at with respect to all of our facilities?
I have on my very near-future agenda to present you an update on that three-year facilities plan, either in June or in August. So we can have that discussion then. The important thing is to get the ask on the table for the state. This does not bind us or tie us in any way, shape, or form to what we might do there. But we do owe you, and there is work being done on that three-year facilities plan that I'll give you an update on very shortly.
That was my big concern. If we included this as an ask and then in future conversations, change our mind.
This request is very, very broad and very, very generalized. It doesn't, they don't require building plans or footprints or anything in that nature, of that nature. So it's fine.
Thank you.
I have a first and I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Wechter.
Thank you.
And next, I'd like to call up Mr. Mark Barnaby, please. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Williams, and Counsel Gardner. I am pleased to be here. Not happy why I'm here. I appreciate the sentiment and the tribute to Joe Lang. I think that's a wonderful tribute to him, and I commend the college for doing that. If I can, it's interesting sitting here. I can digress just for a second. Colleges such as St. Pete College provide an important aspect in the education process. And one of the big things that you all do is provide access to students who can't get into college somewhere else. And I think that's an important role. I'm Chair of the Take Stock in, excuse me, Chair, Vice Chair of Take Stock in Children. And that program's a great program that provides access to children that are at risk in the high schools and middle schools. And we have, in the county I'm in, we have 90% success rate getting them into postgraduate school. But what we have found is because we work with them so hard, it is hard to keep them in those colleges. And so we're working on college career counseling, and I commend the efforts that you all are having in that regard. And it is a challenge because it is a big step up for a lot of those students. I also wanted to make a comment. It is odd that I come from Bradenton. Senator Galvano, I've known Senator Galvano since he was a student at Manatee High and was a teacher there. If there's a, if Senator Galvano is the least of your worries on the education side. He's had a fundraiser for education in our county for about 25 years. And he is a big proponent of education and is on our board as well. I was retained as special counsel for the board and available for whatever need you might have. But in particular, I was retained in regard to the Marvin Bright matter. And I just want to give you a little brief history and then tell you where I think we go from here. Notice of dismissal for Dr. Bright, who was your provost at the Tarpon Springs campus, was given on October 11 of 2017. Dr. Bright filed for a formal hearing with the Division of Administrative Hearings pursuant to the Florida Administrative Procedures Act. They appointed an administrative law judge, Dr. D.R. Alexander. They had a DOA hearing in February. There is a 28-page recommended order that Judge Alexander issued. Respondent Bright has filed some exceptions to that. And the college, through their attorney, Mark Levitt, has responded. At this point, I've provided those documents to you for your review. And I don't expect any action today, in part because you just got them. I think that'd be ridiculous. Second, I want to make sure you're comfortable with where you're going and also provide you with the opportunity to review any part of the record that you might want to see. That will be available with your clerk. The, I want to remind you that you are in a quasi-judicial process in this regard, as well as, of course, you are in a Sunshine Board. So you can't talk among yourselves until you come back in front of these meetings. And, but I just want to remind you of that because sometimes these things are kind of interesting. I want you to have adequate time to review the record, make sure you're comfortable with that. I would hope to come back to you in June with a recommendation and may have some discussion with you before then. And I'm always available if you need to talk to me. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board at this time?
I have one.
Sure.
Could you give us a high-level overview that I'm sure will be more specific in June of the board's responsibility and participation in this process, like where we are today, what action we are, and by rule, where that comes from?
I'm happy to do that in very general terms at this point. You are reviewing the recommended order, determining whether or not any of the exceptions apply. In order to deviate significantly from that order, you're going to have to review the record entirely, which is a lot of work here. And so I think as we get closer to that process and as we go through that process, generally, you have findings of fact in there and conclusions of law. Findings of fact are items that you have less control over, let me put it that way, as opposed to conclusions of law. And so I'll provide you a more detailed report before your June meeting. And I hope that at least gets you some direction.
Well, we thank you for stepping in and helping us during this time, particularly with this. And if I'm hearing you right, we can approach you individually with any questions we have over the next month before the June meeting as we read through all the documentation we've been given to make sure there's an understanding of what's there.
Exactly. And I'm happy to be available for that. And there is a lot of material, so you may need to do that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, that moves us to the consent agenda. Like to take this all as one action. However, I'd like to open it up first if there are any questions regarding any of the points of the consent agenda before we vote. I have a first and a second. Any comments?
I've got a quick question. So Perkins Grant-funded physicians were going to prospectively fund them for the next year with the assumption?
That we'll be funded. Correct.
Have received some confirmation in writing?
Well, I have not received, I personally have not received any confirmation in writing, but we will support those physicians pending the outcome of the Perkins grant.
Highly likely.
Absolutely.
It's been how many years in a row?
I've been here 30 years. It's been here at least that long.
Yeah, okay.
I have one question as well. I'm not sure who to ask. I'm just curious what the process is as we, and this is in regards to Section B 3 and the lease for Nature's Table. I'm just curious what the process is to come up with the rental amount. And if we're looking as a college campus-wide on all the campuses to make sure we're analyzing these things and getting competitive rates? I know there are other factors at play here as well. Mr. Miles?
Yes, so we are looking at all of our leases college-wide, and we have a number of different partners. We've identified all the leases that exist. We've identified the expiration dates, just so we know when we would need to approach our tenant partners. We've identified the notice requirements under those leases. And now, over the next month or so, it will be on us as an institution to figure out what our position will be with respect to rent college-wide. In other words, do we approach everybody and say the standard increase will be a certain percentage?
Right.
Or do we just track rent according to what that market demands? We have a lot of leases that are well below market rate. And, you know, if we wanted to take those leases to market rate, we could potentially lose some partners, so.
And I'm sure one of the factors is what service they're providing for students as well as part of these.
That's exactly right. So over the next month or so, I'll be communicating with the president on what our recommendations from the business side of the house is, on how we approach these tenants, what our position as a college should be. And then I'm sure she'll be having discussions with you individually.
Great.
Hi, my name's Joseph Smith. I'm the Director of Purchasing. And I wanted to get up here once before I left because I'm only here for six more weeks. But Dr. Williams, Chairman, Board of Trustees, when you had asked the question about the specific amount on the, or what I took to mean, the specific amount on the lease for Nature's Table here. And I wanted to make the point that I go to, I attend the COP meetings, and I talk to my COP fellows. Those are the Directors of Purchasing at all the other, the 28 schools in Florida. And we do a lot of analysis on, as far as specifics for what you charge for restaurants, cafes at the colleges. And looked at that and spoke with Amy about the one here, which I believe, well, I don't believe, it was a dollar a year up until we raised it this time to $300. But I did want to point out that a lot of the schools, and I find this very interesting. It's the thing I've learned the most since I've been here two years, was the food services. So many schools pay for food service. They pay people to come in and provide food service. I'm always amazed at that because we don't have a single cafe here that we do that for. We get at least a little money to help cover, offset. So that's one of the things we looked at when I was talking with Amy about the amount to approach this particular cafe in this building.
Thank you for that.
I did want to point out that we do look at that. We are rare in that we don't have a single, even our smallest campus, we make a little money. And most schools don't do that.
That's great. Good information. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work here. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work here, too.
Thank you.
That was the only question I had. Any, any other questions from the board? I have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That moves us to informational reports. We have none. And the president's report.
Well, the only thing I'd like to share is that we're finalizing our strategic plan. The team is working on my 360, and I believe I'll be meeting with each board member for my evaluation next month. We'll also be, I know, can you believe it? It's gone by so fast. I don't want Debron to do it. But I'm joking. But also that we are starting our plan, our monthly plan, on engaging our legislators, those in our area and outside of our area, to get prepared for this, this coming year. So that would be my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is June 19, right here at the epicenter. Thank you all for being here.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Cole?
As we're getting into summer and travel months, it made me think of the fall and the schedule that we get on a monthly basis of campus events as well as conferences. And I was wondering if collectively, we could take some time at the June meeting to look at what this administration thinks is a priority to have trustee attendance? And we can actually raise our hand because there are a couple of conferences coming up out of town that I think Dr. Williams would like one of us, at least one of us, to attend? And if we could do that collectively, maybe we could have better representation.
Sure. So all trustees, please bring your calendars at the June meeting. Thank you, Ms. Cole. With that, we adjourn today's meeting. Thank you all for being here.